We reconvened to open session. No actions taken in closed session.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought it was gonna be really hot, so I came in short, so you can see all these ties of the audience.
Those are their movies.
Rocky, nice tie. I have five public comments. Please note the meeting is recorded in livestream through www.crfusd.org. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters not on the agenda this time. Please state your name and address and keep your comments concise, brief, and limited to five minutes or less. A maximum of 20 minutes is allotted to each subject and on the current on the agenda. The ground act is switched to board considering any item not currently on the closed session. Members of the public are entitled to speak to any item on the agenda either immediately after the item is called by the board president or following background information provided related to the item at the board president's discretion. Each person is entitled to speak on any item only once at any meeting. All the board members may seek additional information. Participation and debate on any item before the board shall be limited to members of the board. Please fill out a comment card which will be given to the board president indicating the item you wish to address. Comments are limited to five minutes per individual and 20 minutes per item. This time I just wanna let everyone know, trusty Brown will not be at today's meeting. Maria Palosu.
Good evening, everyone. Board President Orloff and fellow board members, thank you for your service to the children of Katari and Rona Park. And in taking up this opportunity to address you this evening, my name is Maria Palosu and I'm the SEIU 102 field representative for classified employees in the district. In October of 2013, I began requesting information from the district about a possible violation of the education code and contract related to the use of non-public agency employees. While many of my requests were ignored by the district, the information received and information you make available to the public on the district website have raised questions that we feel rise to a level of importance to be brought directly to you this evening. On June 11, 2013, you approved a contract with Trish Longacre as a behavior specialist consultant. The contract is for 175 days of labor at $600 per day, moving not to exceed value of $105,000. A review of the minutes of this board does not reveal any amendments or increases in the value of that contract. However, as of the most recent information available on the website, warrants totaling $357,273.88 have been issued to Ms. Longacre by the district. That dollar amount exceeds the not-to-exceed limit on her contract by $250,273.88. Over the term of the contract, the use of non-public agency employees has increased from nine to 22 non-public agency TSA one-on-one assistants employed by the district. The majority of these new employees are employed by a company named Spire, a company owned by Ms. Longacre. It appears that Ms. Longacre has been used as a consultant to recommend and justify the hiring of non-public agency employees, and then she's also providing the employees for those positions that she justifies. We ask that you direct an independent investigation of the overpayments made to Ms. Longacre. We further ask that you direct an independent investigation of the apparent conflict of interest with the same consultant who justifies the need for a non-public agency employee who also owns the firm and provides those employees. We ask that you report your findings to the public. Thank you again for your service to the children of the district. Our employees are equally committed to these children, and we look forward to your prompt attention to the serious situation. I've left a statement with Ms. McKeon to be added to the minutes. Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments and comments under that slide? I have six presentations. Introduction of 2014-15 Industry of Media.
Good evening. Thank you. I moved over here. We've had a number of changes, and I've been thinking about the right way and the right order to go in. We wanna make sure that we acknowledge the people who will be working for you as part of our leadership team next year. As always, I want to thank Chief Business Official Anne Baron for the work that she's been doing for the last few years. Our new metaphor of, well, we haven't exactly turned the financial corner, but we can now at least see it, and that's to her credit. I wanna thank Elizabeth Kaufman for the work that she's done as Assistant Superintendent guiding our instructional program and looking forward to seeing the things that we're gonna do in 2014-15 with her. And then we have some changes out here, so I wanted to acknowledge everybody. And like I said, I was kinda struggling because of different people moving around of where the right place to start. But I'll ask Josh Savage to stand up. He didn't know he was going to be first. And I wanna thank... It's okay, you can clap, because Josh is great. Josh has really done a fine job as our Director of Facilities, Grounds, Facilities Maintenance and Operations. I actually have two cheat sheet notes here, but that's not what I wrote down. And one of the things that we're adding to Josh because he's done such a good job is our Instructional Technology Department. It'll be under his supervision, and we look forward to his leadership in that area. But since we can't necessarily give him the gift of time, we've decided to make a change in this area. Last year, Dan Exelbe to stand up now. We... Yes, Josh can sit. We had an opportunity last year to seal Dan away from the Sonoma County Office of Education and bring him in our district. We knew that he had a future with us in technology. And year one, we really wanted to make sure that we could put the tech in tech middle, and so he willingly took that site-level assignment along with his instructional technology assignment. He's done a remarkable job this year. But next year, he'll relinquish the site part and work more in our Instructional Technologies Department. But we've assured him and his principal that he will continue to be an instrumental part of helping to put tech in tech middle, but also spreading around the district. So thank you very much, Dan. And then, I know I saw her. Suzie King, who is Director... Oh, wait, Food Services Coordinator. Check my sheets. And actually, I have her representative here from Sedexo. He's working with her. So thank you very much. You're doing a great job of food service. Another one of our classified directors, who's probably in age building still, working on our budget, is our Director of Business and Fiscal Services, Wendy Wood. And we wanna thank and clap for her to... There's all the number crunching that keeps us moving forward, hopefully getting our adoptable budget put together for two weeks from tonight. On another support area, we'll move to that, I guess is the next place to go, Diane Ashton, Special Education Director. Oh, and shotler. Senior athlete. Are you senior?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So Diane came to us a few years ago and came out of retirement, and we're working hard to make sure our special education program is serving the needs of our students K-12. Thank her for her service there. And a new member of the Special Education Administrative Team, Rocky Schuman. Rocky will be serving in 2014-15 as a Program Specialist and getting involved in our Special Education Department during a time of a lot of change, changing how we do things and bringing in a lot of the classes that were formerly filled with students going to the Sonoma County Office of Education. And so the Program Specialist position will be instrumental in helping to guide that, and I'm sure he's looking forward to sitting in many, many, many fun IEPs. And he has his word pen out for him, so thank you very much. I think on that note, we can go to... Well, I guess the best place to go next would be Galia Norsachi. Formerly Principal of Evergreen Elementary School. I know that we've broken some hearts there, but I'll say, I've worked with some great principals over the years who really know how to run a school, and Galia is one of the finest that I've ever worked with. And so we're asking her to bring that talent to the school district as a whole and fill a position that's been either empty or parceled out to different people over the last probably half a decade or so, and that's our Student Services Director. But we couldn't let her go being a principal fully, so she'll take the transitional role with University Elementary and really help grow that school into one for the school district. So thank you, Galia. And with that, then I guess Dawn Whitty could stand up, our newest member of the ... Dawn is the new Evergreen Elementary School Principal. And let's see, we have Elementary's going next... Oh, wait, yes, our second newest elementary school principal, Teresa Peterson. Please stand up. She's been an invaluable part of Thomas Page Academy for a long, long time, and she's gonna do a great job as principal. We look forward to seeing her in action in 2014-15, and I will bring the snake by at some point. Next to her, we have Sarah Faucon. Has done an outstanding job as a first-year principal at Bonavista Elementary School. I've enjoyed watching her grow in that role, and it's not easy to fill the shoes of somebody who was there 24 years and literally helped design the school. And yet she's done it with grace, and her leadership at that school's been great, and she's our district-wide Twitter expert, so she has that to her credit. And we share a couple of our favorite parents together, so... Next to her is Susan Lopez. Susan is Principal of John Grede Primary School and Walder-Runner Intermediate School. It's been a challenging assignment for the last couple of years, developing the single grade span and being able to go back and forth, but she's done it well. And we look forward to seeing her continue that process in 2014-15. I guess a little announcement forthcoming shortly as well regarding that, so thank you very much, Susan. And moving out of the middle school, Cotton Middle, someone who's served the district a long time and done it very well. Stand-up Lori Mason. I'm sure it's always a little tiny bit bittersweet for Lori to be in here, knowing the years of service that she gave to Mountain Shadow Middle School before it closed, and then was given the difficult and challenging assignment of really creating a new school from two that went away, what became Lawrence Jones. And she's worked very hard to do that over the course of the last few years, and thank you very much, Lori.
I do have to say, when I first came on at Mountain Shadows, this was the first room I came in to beat the staff up. So every time I'm in there, I think of it very fond.
And... Oh, that's right. I was... Thank you very much.
Mayor.
District Secretary, Winnie McKeon, because I was saving her for last because... No, 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 you did help me, because last of all the elementary school principals, because she's now the dean of the elementary school. We're announcing today that Teresa is going to... No, she's done a great job upon, and she has Susan beat by, I think, just a few days. But they make a great team of elementary school principals. They work hard together. Teresa's done a great job upon, I'm sorry. And now, standing up would be Amy Goodwin. Amy has been in several schools that closed, and you may not remember that she first came into the district under the tutelage of Lori Mason.
Actually, I was here before Lori.
Well, that's right. I forgot that too. But you were under the tutelage at one point when the open position of Mountain Shadows Middle School Principal was filled. But she's journeyed around the district, and she's back at Mountain Shadows Educational Center as Principal of Technology Middle School and helped get the school open. And as a reminder, did a great job last year touring around and working with parents and teachers and students to develop a culture for tech middle school, and I'm excited to see the eighth graders join us here next year.
We're so revolving.
Well, see, I miss somebody too. All right. See, I should really... I was gonna write all this down, and I didn't. I thought I could handle it, and obviously I didn't. Sitting next to Dan is Karen Tanesco. Stand up, Karen. Still Karen, away from the county office a few years ago, and for a position that she's not in, and asked her to take on a new position in Human Resources, and she's had a huge deep learning curve the last few years, but she's done it very well, and she's learned a lot, so thank you very much, Karen. And now, at the high school level, replacing me sadly as Principal of Technology High School is Bob Stappin. Bob's given some great years of service to our district, and it's good to have a veteran, somebody seasoned, somebody who's very senior like Bob, somebody who's had a lot of experience in education for a number of years, decades, really. In short order, I'm sure he'll probably have all the mistakes that I made this year, so I look forward to seeing you over there and done a great job, Bob. And sitting next to Bob, we have two of his assistant principals. We have Angie Serranina and Josh Goleman. I noticed that Dawn re-aligned herself away from them. That's okay.
Is something she said?
Thank you very much for the work that you're doing at Ranch High School. And not with us tonight, and she actually gave me a disc because I chided her when she wasn't gonna be here while she's at the Giants game, because apparently she's part of some reunion, and there's 50 people. It's Amy Carter, who was at Thomas Page Academy and will be moving over to be principal at Ranch Katari High School, but when we tried to open up her file that she gave us, it did not work. So we'll have to see what happened with that. But anyway, she wanted to say hi and say that she's looking forward to being at Ranch Katari High School next year. I don't know if we go... Did I miss anybody? Oh, outstanding. On that note, I really wanna thank all of you for the hard work that you do and for the hard work, Rocky, that you're gonna do next year.
I have seven communications. A, your members have responded.
I just wanna mention just a couple things. I had the experience prior to Project Grad, working with Project Grad for three or four weeks, coming here, doing this, doing that, and a lot of great people over there. The two that are just outstanding is Jess and Matthew Brown, who just put in ungodly hours at making that a success. Just wanna thank them here for their leadership and efforts. And then lastly, you know, we've had a lot of past year challenges. We've had a lot of journeys that have been quite successful. Times are changing, and we're gonna be going to a lot of different places than coming here. It's great to see this team here, and I know we're gonna be quite successful. Thank you.
It feels like a blur. I'm glad that we're here past COVID. It's great to see everybody here with a smile on my face, because I think we have a bright future ahead of us with the passage of Measure B. I think we have a lot of great things to look forward to. Thank you all for helping, and I look forward to the future of this district.
I just... We ended the year in a bang. I mean, you know, we passed Measure B. The graduations were incredible, a lot of happy, smiling faces. And, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there was a... County Office had an information night for people that were interested in becoming a board member. And there was five of us on the panel. One of the questions that they asked was, you know, something, you know, a positive experience, and I believe all five of us agreed that it's graduation. That's the key. And there's always someone or something that sticks out. And for me this year, there was a young man at Tech High. He got his diploma, and tears started coming down his face. And that's what it's all about. That's you guys make that magic happen, and that's the one time of the year that it just, for me, is always the most memorable. So just great job. Thank you, everyone. And then last month, as a delegate for the California School Boards Association, we had a speaker there that was just amazing. Her name was Dr. Melva Beals. She was one of the Little Rock Nine, and she talked of her experience of what it was like being a child in this school with, you know, all these negative things happening to her and how she had security guards that were bringing her in the back door and classrooms. And it was just incredibly inspiring hearing her speak. She's now a professor at Dominican College in San Rafael. And just an amazing, amazing person, her life story. If you ever have an opportunity to hear her speak, I highly recommend it, because it really kind of grounds you as a person, but really gives you meaning for everything that we are all doing. So it was just incredible.
I attended four graduations or promotions. It was a lot of fun. I actually got to get out certificates at Thomas Page. Teresa, you had a great school you're gonna be at. There were a lot of parents that were very, very happy there after I was trying to get out of the parking lot, but I had a hard time doing that, always getting stopped. So I think our K-8 program there is really beneficial to a lot of our students. And it was a full 30-student class, and what was really good to see is that most of them will be remaining in our district in high school, which I think is a very positive thing. I'll just, again, I worked Project Grad. It was... I never dealt Texas Hold'em. It was a lot of fun. Those kids have a lot of energy, and I was tired by the time we shipped. And what was amazing is left was bringing me chips all night, that he actually took a table at 12:30 as I was walking out the door, so I don't know how he felt in that day. All right. And again, congratulations to us and our community on Passage to Measure B. I think, Josh, you got your work cut out for you. It's gonna be a wild ride, but I can't wait. With that, item B, Chief Business Official.
I'll save fiscal items for when we get to item 12A, our fiscal update, but I did wanna report, we continue to get information from both cities on new housing that's coming along. The development that I do currently have a timeline for is a new mixed-use residential and commercial project south of Walgreens on Old River Highway in Katari. That's an infill project, so it's not very large. It's about 19-town houses, and then there will be retail on the bottom floor. But the developer is City Ventures, our partner in the Keyser property, we hope. So that is an exciting thing to see that moving forward. The other projects are continuing. Brookfield has sent us the license agreement for them to put the water line across the Keyser property, and they are going to pay probably up to a year's worth of reclaimed water cost for us, so that will be very beneficial. That runs us about $20,000 for Lawrence Jones for a year, so that'll be a helpful thing. And I don't think we knew this during the last board meeting, but the city of Rona Park has, in fact, agreed to put the utilities along Snyder Underground in front of Ranch Katari, so that's a very positive element, both from an appearance standpoint and of course for safety. So we will continue to work with the city on new housing. I did go to the Housing Element workshop that last weekend. Everyone else in town was at graduation, really. There were not very many people at the meeting, and most of the ones there were ones tied into an interest group, like for affordable housing or the senior population. But it's good to see the city moving forward with the required general plan update, and I think there will be some positive impacts coming out of that for the district as well.
Right. Item C, Assistant Superintendent of Education Services.
I just wanna follow up on the June 2nd staff development day. We had all sorts of different training going on for all of our staff around the district. I want to recognize Diane for her efforts bringing the special education staff together, and also to acknowledge the leadership of teacher teams at the secondary level, because we had administrators leading the elementary and the middle school, language arts and math, but the high school work and the CTE work, Diane supported, as well, but Valerie Dancer led science training as Dawn, and helped with the history, social science, and visual performing arts. And Ruben and Christina and Nadine and Michelle McGinnity all got the math departments going. So it was a big effort, the day after the last day of school and graduation, and I certainly want people to recognize that it was... We appreciate all their time and energy getting that running for us, because it was a good day, and it was a busy day, so...
And D, Superintendent of Education.
Measure B passed. So that's item number one. We won't get the official results till perhaps after our next meeting. If we do, we'll, just as we've done before, air them into the record. I would like to thank a lot of people who were involved, and perhaps we can organize something at our August board meeting to recognize a list of people that gave a significant amount of time over the last few months to make this happen, Passage to Measure B. A measure that requires 55% or more of the voters. It's not difficult to do, or it is difficult to do. Sometimes it's made not to look difficult, but it only looks that way because of the talent and the hard work of a lot of people. So I won't thank them all now, but I'd like to see something that we do at our August board meeting to formally thank them. And we're not letting a lot of time go by, so we are planning on getting started with the Measure B bond facility plan. I believe tomorrow, we have a meeting with our financial advisor and underwriter to look at the strategy for the first on sale that needs to match up with the projects that we are... That we can reasonably see being 85% complete for in the building phase within three years. It's still a very favorable time for interest rates in terms, so sizing this first on sale will be critical. We have scheduled for next Tuesday, our Facility Committee, District-wide Facility Committee, as you'll call it, as two trustees, Mr. Gilroy and Mrs. Wiltamood, and we'll have a number of community members there and outside experts that have been working with us. The next step is to go through that list of projects that we have and see the ones that need to get started right away. In the meantime, our Director of Facilities Maintenance and Operations is working off of his list of items that really we don't need any new drawings or any new plans for. Perhaps a new flooring at one of the elementary schools and that sort of thing, getting those scheduled. So I would see when we come back, two weeks from tonight, our last regular meeting of the year, that we'll at least be in a stage week to report back to the board just pieces as a whole, some of the projects that... that we'll at least be in a stage week to report back to the board, trustees as a whole, some of the projects that we're ready to get started. And I guess under the category of other, it is always, I agree with trustee Gelardi, moving to be a high school graduation. As a K-12 district, that's our goal, to bring children in in kindergarten and see them learn and see them grow and see them progress. And then leave our district successfully ready for whatever the next phase of their life journey is going to be. And so I agree, it's moving. I think everybody should attend. I'd love for, where I see out here, elementary principals and elementary teachers, and we need to remember and thank them that their part of the contribution is just as valuable as every teacher along the way. I've seen other districts where in some organized manner that those teachers are welcome and can be a part of the ceremony. So maybe that's something we can think about for next year and beyond.
Please, Dr. Hating. Item A, Consent agenda. Motion.
I move to approve it, consent agenda, item eight A through eight M.
Move to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item nine A, Educational Services, Physical Education Annual Report, twenty thirteen fourteen.
Well, pursuant to board policy, I provided the annual report on physical education program, certifying that we are providing the appropriate number of instructional minutes at the appropriate pre-seats. And, you know, say that, discuss this, that we check every year and we're continuing to monitor and reporting to you.
Elizabeth, can you please explain the difference with Thomas Page K versus middle school? What are the difference in hours or minutes, rather?
Students who are served at an elementary site, these A-K, well, actually one through five or one through eight, are given the two hundred minute time limit, just based on the elementary grade span as opposed to being the seventh or twelfth grade students on the second year campus.
So some of the state.
Distinction.
Actually, the district is allowed the choice based upon model of the. So when we designated Thomas Page Academy to K-8 elementary school several years ago, that was part of the action.
I was just kind of curious because like, you know, everything, you know, the state's always about equity, equity, equity. But again, depending on classification, you look at the same age groups differently, which is kind of amazing.
And in our board policy, it says instruction and physical education, so we invite it for a total period of time of not less than two hundred minutes. Each ten school days, four students in grade one through six and students in grade seven, three cows on the elementary campus. So that's how it's interpreted, how it's written for us and how it's interpreted by us. Makes it code fifty-one, two ten and two twenty-two. If anyone is interested in research about education.
Well, thank you.
Some of our, the summaries of some of the sites, you know, there's, there's zero entries.
For the physical fitness, for the physical fitness testing. That was, some of them, it depends on, you know, a grade span's not tested. Like, for example, we only test if some of the ninth grade. So if you're a technology high school, fifth and seventh grade aren't tested. However, or what anomaly we came across.
There's some of the ninth grade?
There's some of the eighth grade. What did I say?
You said eighth grade.
Oh, sorry, if some of the ninth grade. There are eight students in the technology ninth grade class that were tested. So that was an anomalous result that we saw. That is part of the reason that you do the testing and making sure that all of the students are tested.
How about the elementary sites? On this.
Just again, reporting, they're all, they're all tested. And we have the fifteen, sorry, thirteen, fourteen results are going in. And, you know, it's, it's a matter of just making sure that we're getting all the data in from the PE specialist. But that's where, we have a discrepancy right now, one hundred and twenty kids in our, in our data collecting for thirteen, fourteen and trying to make sure that we know where those are. A situation where a teacher left the district and is no longer a district employee. And those scores are not available to us, so we're researching those right now.
So, so what is that? How do we collect the data?
It's, they get a test and it's bubbled on scantron sheets or collected by hand and comes on the site.
Teacher doesn't scan it in or?
The physical education teacher posts.
Within a term of time?
And, and accessing it's, it's challenging because in areas of the middle, of the elementary school, the physical education teacher doesn't have a homework, you know, they teach all the kids. So we have to, we've been supporting that in areas in past years. And I think that's another area for anomalies that occur. Which is why this year, we're trying to match the rosters of all the kids who have been tested with the rosters of all the kids in fifth grade. And as I said, we're, we're disrupting about one hundred and twenty kids. And we know where the source of the point of those are. But literally, Melissa's been talking to Aries about getting queries and Aries is saying they can't provide us that data. There's not a field in Aries, which again, to me is hard to interpret. But at this point, I haven't, I just said, you ladies figure it out. And I'll check and monitor later because I want to know that all those things are covered and tested.
And I wasn't sure in the description of high school where states freshmen receive four hundred minutes, is that the same as in those who delay the second year of PE?
All of our freshmen, I think, are in PE.
But there's a second year of PE.
Exactly, four years senior, yeah. It's one of the little, I mean, that actually requires four years. It's been reinterpreted as a two-year because the exemptions for year three and four, it's so all-encompassing that, I mean, if you wanted to take four years PE, you could as an elective. But as a district, our policy is that all freshmen take PE, that they need to take a second year prior to graduating unless they need one of the conditions or waiver.
I think it's still the same instructional minutes, you have to take PE every day. You know, if it's sophomore or junior senior, you're going to get the instructional minutes for the secondary level.
Any questions?
I'm attending. Personnel Services Board, Radification Personnel Action Report thirteen fourteen, National Enrollment Classified. I didn't, my question is, I don't really have anything on my.
I paid for money.
Okay, thank you.
It's short.
Sure.
This is an annual item that we do during summer.
There we go. Any questions besides? I have a motion.
I move to ratify Personal Action Report thirteen fourteen dash eleven, be classified.
To second.
I'll second.
I move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Item eleven A, Business and Operations Services, award fixed price contract with services management.
So I reported to the board over and over again, probably in more detail than anyone would like, the arduous process the state is putting us through this year to award our food service management consulting contract on a five-year cycle. I think we talked in the past about how the CDs made us go through many, many rounds of contract revisions. The most fun-filled one being the time they gave us roll back the changes they had made the change before, the day before, based on information they got from the US Department of Agriculture. And we've talked about the fact that we have a very strict timeline in order to be able to have a contract in place in time for us to serve our students on the year-round track in July. So the peculiar thing about this process is that the board needs to award the contract. And then we send the proposal and the contract to the CD, who based on the process we've been through already, is going to make the big changes, I would think. I'd be surprised if they didn't. So presumably I'll bringing, be bringing this back to you again at some point with changes they wanted us to make for your outline. That said, having gone through this entire process, we had one vendor come to the mandatory site tour. And that is our current vendor, Sedexo, which this company we've been very happy with and had a long relationship with. So nonetheless, we've gone through this mandated process and it's been fun for everyone, right, Suzie? I know Sedexo feels it was fun and will be more fun. So we're required to have a loop rate for evaluating the proposal, so that's what we have distributed to you. And we, I guess, decided not to give Sedexo a one-hundred percent mark because they could have always produced a price mark.
They gotta be.
And I'm afraid that if we turned in a one-hundred percent score, the CD would kick it back and make us go through more rounds. So we don't really have a standard to say eighty-five since we had one of this to compare to. So what we're recommending is that the board award the contact, contract to Sedexo, please. So we can send it off to Sacramento and have more fun.
Any questions? Motion. I move to abort the fixed price contract with Food Services Management Consulting to entrance. Sedexo?
Yes.
Is there a second? Move in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twelve A, Board Services Fiscal Update Plan. Item one, voters propose fourteen fifteen budget may revision. Do we cover that?
Well, I think one and two kind of go together. So we have a very preliminary budget document for the board review tonight because we're still really waiting to see what is the state going to do. You know, the May revision contains a really surprising proposal increasing the Spurs contribution rate. And fourteen fifteen dropped the current eight and quarter percent to nine and a half percent, which for us is about three to four thousand dollar swing in the first year and will grow exponentially. While the groups have been hard at work saying, hey, state, you can't do that to districts with this late in the year. Many of the districts have settled contracts and we, we really have no time to react. Furthermore, the employee contribution would also, it's almost going to be increased. And without quite a big surprise, people would make headfirst checks in the above because most of them are gone. So we're kind of waiting to see what happens there. There are proposals that would make the first year increase smaller, so there would be greater increases later. But at least it would give districts time to adjust their budgets. There have been proposals where the state would not tie down all the interim year deferrals and would use that money to give districts additional funding, which would help us then pay the Spurs liability. There's still other conversations going on about the state using some of the revenue to fund the mandated cost backlog, which is part of the law of debt, or to do another round of top core funding because it's a real need that districts have. So they have to be done by June fifteenth, which probably is the sixteenth this year, because the fifteenth is a Sunday, or they don't get paid. So we know there'll be a budget by next week. But will this be a year where we actually know what's in the budget? Or will, again, we be waiting for the trailer bills in June, I mean, in July, that's what they were mostly in July? So we don't know. At some point early next week, we'll know whether we're going to have some time to adjust our budget or whether we just get a budget done and know that it's really going to have massive changes in July as we have the last couple of years. So please do not take this and compare what you get in two weeks to this because they're going to be very different. But the county told us they wanted us for the something, so there's something. And in format, it looks a lot like we did what we would get at third interim, looks a little better. But there, there's too many major uncertainties for me to really feel like I'm doing something wrong. Any questions?
Next time.
I like to do it over and over again.
So that means we're, is it item three, correct?
Keever property, yes. So this is exciting. City Ventures, that we've been working with for a whole year plus now, sent us an approval notice indicating that they have concluded their feasibility study on the Keever property. And therefore, they had to deposit the remainder of the first fifty thousand dollars into escrow. They put a hundred dollars in last year and got that money. So we got a check for forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, which is very exciting. Now we're depositing that money in Fund Forty, which is the special reserve for capital化 projects. And we discussed that with the board in the past to be used for future facility needs. However, we may need to transfer that money to Fund Seventeen, the special reserve, reserve economic uncertainties in order to have an optimal budget. Depending on what we find out early next week. In order to help us meet the three percent economic uncertainty reserve, we might have to move that money to Fund Seventeen. The intention would be to move it back when funding improves and we're able to do that. So since I am asking you, I'm basically asking for direction to do something different than what I originally said to do with money. We do want it to be in Fund Forty in the long term because we do have many facilities needs. And that's an appropriate use of money that was bought with facilities money. I mean, you're selling a property, it was a facility, so you should put that money towards facilities. But in the short run, we may need help in those terms.
So you need a motion, right?
No, just direct.
Direct.
Now would be the time for you to say, no, don't do that.
Okay.
That's where we will be putting you in. Then we will give you the May enrollment report at our second regular meeting in June. But consistent with the discussion we had, we have the, the May board meeting. I've been looking at the numbers and there are a lot of different ways that you can look at enrollment numbers. So this is a little summary of some things that I know. So again, you can gaze at numbers all you want. So at the top, you see, for instance, total K-5. And in August of two thousand and thirteen, we had two thousand five hundred fifty students in that grade span. And in August of fourteen, two thousand five hundred seventy-seven, so that's an increase of twenty-seven, that's great. In August of two thousand and thirteen, you see the one thousand two hundred and ten, six eight, and the one thousand two hundred and ninety-six in August of fourteen, for an increase there of eighty-six. And that required kind of going back and forth with where we had sixth graders and the seventh graders at Thomas Page. Where we put, you can see the trend there is good. And then nine twelve, we had one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven in August of thirteen. And then that went up only six to seventeen hundred eighty-three in August of fourteen. But we'll come back to that in minutes. And then, so that's the beginning of the year, August. And then one of the things that we talked about is throughout the year, students come and go. I mean, it's really, you can see about, we may have ten or fifteen or twenty students throughout the district come and go on a, on a daily basis. So these things tend to either out, and who's in, and who's out, and who's in. But there is a change if you look at all of them throughout the time. So then going to April, which was the last month that I haven't looked at. So we were comparing August before, so now we're comparing April. So in April of two thousand and thirteen, we had two thousand five hundred forty-three K-5 students. But this April, we had two thousand five hundred eighty, so for, and that changed to twenty-seven, so that, that's good. And then in April of two thousand and thirteen, we had one thousand two hundred twelve. And then this April, that went up to one thousand three hundred three, and the trend is good, it went up ninety-one. And then nine twelve, you see the seventeen oh nine, seventeen thirteen, fairly close for a change of four. So that's if you read it from. So that's if you read across, and then if you read down, that just gives you some idea of the net change within a year between August and April. So K five, last school year, we had a net loss of seven students, and this year we had a net gain of three. Pretty stable, pretty statistically close. And then sixth to eighth grade, last year we had a net change of plus two, and this year we had a net change of plus seven. And then you see it's different in high school, and that makes sense. Unfortunately, that's where students sometimes tend to drop out or go to another program if they enroll. For instance, you can see in the note, we got a number of continuation students that, for instance, transferred to K five, a program that we helped get started with Santa Rosa Junior College. So that looks like a net enrollment loss for us. It's good for the students, they're in a program, better for them, and getting them prepared for the next stage of life, but it did look like a loss for us. So the numbers that you see here for any unified district or normal, where you're going to see a normal drop off with students throughout the years at the high school level, but between the two years, you see it's about the same. Minus sixty-eight on one year, minus seventy the next. And I would say those numbers are articulated because we've done, and to the credit of the high school staff who are back there, really helping guide the students to where they need to be next and get them in a program. So then you see the note to down below, we reduced our student nine, twelve continuation school, which reduced enrollment. But if you look at the overall impact on average daily attendance, it was far less than one to one. Meaning, well, many of these kids were enrolled, we had them on the books, but they really weren't attending, they really weren't getting work done. Hopefully, we can adapt it by the program for them to be in. And so although if you look at, if you took the students who were enrolled when there was Eltonia on a separate site, Phoenix on a separate site, and Rancho, you add that up, you think, oh, well, that enrollment should grow about the same amount, and it did, and that's why. It was part of that process with counseling students into more appropriate programs. So there's, there's some balance because at the same time that was going on, we expanded enrollment capacity in Tech High. So that's sort of balanced out over the last year. So hopefully, the trend we can see now both sites will be growth for both. So another thing you can look at would be kindergarten as opposed, well, kindergarten's great for us. In the last two kindergarten classes, there were two big students dead in some time. We had a net gain at the kindergarten level, and that's good from one April to the next. And then we exited four hundred grade twelve students in May two thousand and thirteen, and we brought in four hundred and forty K students that next August replaced them. So when you see in our budget, and we look at CED's data projected into the future, we're very, very conservative. Generally follow what we expect that to be, but over time, when you exit fewer students than you're taking in, you start to see that change. And so that's a good sign if we keep exiting fewer students than we take in, and that definitely says our enrollment is going to be growing. And then the next note I made, again, back to the middle, I saved it for last. The middle schools, we definitely see an increase there. That's a big increase of plus ninety-one. Without, I think we could look at, is that because we added some middle school level grades in Thomas Page Academy? Is it because we relaxed, it was more, you know, it was important approved to bring back middle school sports? Is it that we opened Tech Middle? I'm not sure which change. Is it that we added sixth grade back? Tough to say which of those, maybe bits and pieces of all, but it's definitely given us an, an increase at the middle school level. And we want to keep those students the next few years and see if it goes on to our schools, so that's a good trend to have. Anyway, this is just some, a different way to look at the numbers that we have on a monthly basis.
Do we have the indication of how many Ks we're going to end this fall?
We will be checking in with the principals, the elementary principals again on that on Thursday, but the indications that we have are we're at or above the levels we were at a year ago in terms of the number of families that have taken a pack at home and brought it back and said, I'm enrolling little Susan students.
Just a note about what you said about the fluctuation in high school. I don't know if you saw the report that came out today, but statewide graduation rates are up across the board in the state, which is a great thing, so fewer dropouts, some more kids graduating.
It's a good thing.
It's very good.
Any questions? Item twelve B, board services verification of agreement with Roanoke Park Party Education Association dated May nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Any comments?
Well, you see the brief comments, I'd like to thank, although he's not here, he's somewhere enjoying his vacation. The chair of the Roanoke Park Party Educators Association bargaining team, Lanny Lowry. I thought he did an outstanding job throughout the year, leading the process in an open and collaborative manner. We worked through a lot of things in the contract and came to this agreement in a mutual fashion, and there's hope for the future, and look forward to sitting down with Roanoke Park Party Education Association again next year, and there's many members of that association here with us tonight, some of the members of the negotiating team. And I think this is great for the district as a whole and our relationship with our teachers association. So I think it's a highly recommended group.
Any comments?
Just reiterating the, it was obvious that there's collaboration there, and it's nice to see that we come to a common solution. And Lanny, speaking of Lanny, he was, he was someone who wrote an editorial in favor of Measure B that really stood out. I want to thank him for that.
Absolutely. I know that process started early, you know, with looking at the contract. I think that that put everybody in motion to get where we are now. I think a lot of work was done by a lot of people, and I'd like to thank some people, Ma Hahn, Richard, thank you. Lanny, obviously, I think is also key, and where are we? He has vacation now. Hopefully Hawaii, that's where I wish I was. But thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think in this space, no matter the challenge, you can come out with a positive solution.
Other comments? I have a motion.
I move we ratify the agreement with the Roanoke Park Party Educators Association dated May nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Your second? Move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve C, education services public hearing on local control accountability plan, cap, two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. Open public hearing. Closed public hearing.
Before we go to the next item, I would just like to remind everyone that the LCAP according to our county office of education was not intended to be us.
I was, I think you said somewhere else a hundred pages, something like that.
Well, it's only thirty-eight. The quasi-executive summary of the process, plus a forty-three pager for you, with a lot of things that say funding LCFF base, which who knows what that is, and funding T V D.
West of State's Timbuktu.
Yes, yes, it is. With extra lines in the rows, for me, I at least decided to break up the rows, even if I could break up the rows. No. I think we might have had a meeting of minds, and they might let me keep my lines, but.
Item twelve D, board services public hearing, that's from two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, proposed budget. Open public hearing. Closed public hearing. Item twelve E, acceptance of gifts and donations to schools and districts. There are a ton of monetary donations this past month. At Evergreen Elementary, Costco donated forty-five dollars on behalf of David Perez. PG and E donated three hundred and ten dollars on behalf of Francis and Sarah, and seven hundred and fifty dollars on behalf of Thomas Benson. Margaret Han had a twenty-eight dollar donation from Wells Fargo, a forty-eight dollar donation from Mike Seatonor, and an eighty-two dollar donation from PG and E Corp. An anonymous at Bonavista, an anonymous Costco employee donated fifty-two dollars. Mary Ritz donated one hundred and fifty dollars. There was another anonymous donation of one hundred and sixty dollars. And the Lowe's Education Foundation donated two thousand thirty dollars to Bonavista. At Thomas Page, Matthew and Joni Thacker donated twenty-five dollars, Michael Lessin twenty-five dollars. Fitness Fanatics donated twenty-five dollars, the Wells Fargo Foundation donated fifty dollars. Craig Davis Orthodontics donated two hundred dollars. The Rotary Club of Rancho Petagi donated five hundred dollars. And Loud and Clear Inc. donated five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And Lawrence Jones, P G and E Corp. donated forty-five dollars, and Wells Fargo donated five hundred and sixty-six dollars. All in total, the district received donations for four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars this past month. That's incredible. I want to thank everybody who donated to our schools this past month. I'm sure that the money will go to great use. Do I have a motion?
I move we accept the gifts and donations to the schools and district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have thirteen future agenda items.
We retain all previous lists.
Including the, 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 the last week.
Doing actual for the year. It'd be great to see the total that we get of these free donations. One piece we don't do is reconcile to make sure that every single thing that the district's supposed to be. Well, no, but I mean, what we accept.
Yeah, I think we do that.
Maybe what we can do is so we don't have to recreate it every year, just have a running total. The total for the month and the running total for the year. That'll be an easier way of keeping track of it.
Next year, in the, I mean, I would like to see us invite all the P T As, thank them for all the hard work that they do for our schools, and give collaborative amount of money that they give back to our school people, because they bring us a loan.
Yeah, I think they want to come back in June.
Anything else? All right, the future.